Okay, good evening, everyone. The time is 6:32 PM on Tuesday, September 20th, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up is our consent agenda, the minutes from August 30th. Any comments, questions, adjustments?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our August 30th week.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is warrant 0017 and 0018.
Are we signing this today?
Yeah, I've got them here in the folder. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve warrant 17 and 18.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is visitor comment. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone who is unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record for the meeting.
So the only person who signed in is Nancy, but she's not speaking. Her public comment, I just checked her.
Okay, there's something on the agenda. Okay, great. And everybody else is accounted for? Yeah? Okay. Uh, new business, Trent Wells.
Um, there's a presentation here. Jen.
Good. How are you?
It's nice to meet you in person.
I was on the Zoom.
The audio is all.
Yeah.
Sure. Alright, so we just want to talk a little bit about our program, the updates that we've had for this school year. Some program updates. All in all, it's been a smooth opening at the schools. Having the benefit of last year, the satellite schools, it was an easier transition going into this past school year. Minimal supply chain issues due to pre-orders placed in June. In June, we placed all our food purchases for September, so.
For four weeks.
For four weeks, so it's been a smooth transition with having all the food on hand. Supply outlook for fall and winter?
This is actually, again, we're keeping an eye on that. Here, there may be some bumps in the later, later in the fall, so we'll keep posted on that. But right now, things are looking good, and anticipating a thing huge, but I heard maybe fall we could see some more supply chain issues, so we'll keep you posted on that.
There's some minor staffing issues with a couple openings still to fill. As you all know, the labor market, it's very competitive out there. Meals will continue to be free, and the state is working on reimbursement supplement to be paid starting sometime in October.
So the state agreed, they budgeted a certain amount of money for school meals to be free. So we get the luxury, get the USDA reimbursements, and then we're just waiting on supplement and bringing everybody up to their free rate. And they said the first meal is July, October, so we're probably still trying to figure out how they just put this, this one's on the table.
Can I just add a clarifying question there? It hasn't come up here, to my knowledge, unless maybe the principal's headed it off, but it's, the first meal is free.
Correct.
One meal per student.
Correct.
I know it's not, it's come up, so I just wanted to make sure.
First meal is free, and sometimes secondary school, you have a holiday card sales, so if you want to get a beverage or an FED, a holiday card sales, that would be also a cost. But the first reimbursement meal.
For breakfast and lunch.
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Student eligibility is still required to be tracked daily at the school. Even though everybody's free, we still need to track student status.
As soon as they enter their numbers in the POS machine, they track it for us.
So quickly, I mentioned this before, so, again, even though everyone is free this year, we are still sending out applications to families and still encouraging them to fill those out because it does potentially give them access to other benefits. So we are sending those out so families can complete those and send them back.
Can you just talk about a couple of those other benefits, Adam, that we've been able to provide families in the past, people watching?
Yep, so.
Not exhausted this.
Yeah, so we send out an application and we send out a form that's optional called the sharing of information form. And what that allows families to potentially provide us is access, giving us permission to let school building principals know their free and/or reduced lunch status, which would then allow them to have reduced fees for SATs, PSATs, testing. It also would allow us to provide them, if East Meadow or the high school were doing a holiday giveaway and they were giving out holiday baskets, or turkey around Thanksgiving, or meals around Christmas, if they check that option, it would allow us to give their information to the schools and then provide them with what we are providing them at, no cost to them. So it's an optional form, it does not need to be filled out. However, if you don't fill it out, you don't complete it and send it back, then you don't have access to those, those additional benefits. Thank you. Questions on that? Can be very convoluted and confusing, so.
So we've got actually, for 2022, we've got, I guess, our menu's been updated, so our recipes and menus are proposed, we're rolling those out now. And again, I think it's after the first month or two, we'll kind of survey the kids, see what they think, what they like and what they don't like. We'll continue to do that. And Ken's going to get back and his team to do the student engagement programs, the student choice, which was a big hit, where students vote on a station concept, and then we run that station concept afterwards. And then discovery kitchen events, is also kind of like a sampling or tasting for, at all levels, at elementary, secondary, middle school, high school, just to, for introducing new foods and new healthy nutrition. And then the mood boost program, which is more geared to elementary, it's tied to our, you know, how certain foods make kids feel, you know, if it's, we've got certain characters that was alert, or it's.
There's six of them.
There's six characters that we kind of educate the kids on what nutrition foods they're taking, and what sometimes that relates to in their, their mood. So it was kind of nice. It's a really good concept, and again, it involves Ken, an R and D dietitian, in the classroom setting or in the cafeteria setting, but did we run those before last year, or? No, okay. So again, with the pandemic, we weren't able to do some of this stuff, but it's great to get back to some of these great programs for the kids. And then we're also developing, we'll have a quarterly food service newsletter, going to be distributed for parents or the school committee, just kind of highlighting what events we did in the last two or three months, and some of the successes, and maybe spotlighting certain schools, so it'll be kind of a fun thing to do, communication. And then Ken and I did order refresh signage for all the schools, so we have some new concepts that, I think we selected the Market Fresh, which is actually more of a local grown concept, the signage kind of ties into local farms, and really good signage, I think, pictures in the back.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah. You'll see the new cafe themes, the left-hand side is more elementary theme, and the farmer's market is more the secondary theme. So again, all those should be in soon, and Ken and I will be actually putting those up and dressing up some of the cafeterias. So those are the good things. So Ken, why don't you go over the program challenges, I'll let you do the challenge.
Thank you. Preparing for potential supply chain issues later in the year. I think Chris touched on that. Right now, things are looking good, but we just don't know what the future holds. Knock on wood. Labor market attracting and retaining great people. Like I said, we got a wonderful staff here, they love the kids, they're tied into the community, and we're just looking for more people like that, it's been a struggle.
It's a really tough labor market right now, just attracting and retaining good people because the rates out there are very, very competitive. And so I think that we're reviewing that with Adam, and we've done some work in other districts to make sure it's more competitive with the local retail market, as well as other schools as well. So we're providing that to Adam, take a look at what we would recommend.
Yeah, Ken actually sent, good work by Ken too, just some research they did with some area schools and what they pay, but one of the differences is their self-operating food service program, so.
They have different tiers as far as food service.
So we're going to look at that, review that, and hopefully bring something to you guys, so we can get some, attract some staff and be competitive in the area.
And keep our staff.
Yeah, keep your staff, yes.
That's a great point.
Yep.
Long-term use of a temporary production service area at junior, senior high school. This is probably our biggest challenge, and it has been for the past two years. You know, I think we've done a great job of giving the students what they want for the space and the area that we deal with. I'm not sure if anybody's seen what we're working out of.
I'm actually surprised it's the third bullet, not the first. Start bolden.
Sensibly, it should be, but it's actually.
Yeah, but we're here, we want to give these kids the best experience, you know, for breakfast and lunch, and it's been a challenge for the past two years to do that in a high school.
And I talked to the staff last week, as they were, when kind of viewed one service period, and they're something really positive about, you know, just dealing with the challenges that they're facing, and their attitude is fantastic, but again, I don't know what the long-term solution is, but anyway, we can help with that.
Touching subject.
But we can actually, if you need some support, either quoting some stuff too, we have relationships with food service design, we can do something for, you know, no cost to lay out, so.
We're looking at some short-term resolutions. I actually reached out to the board of health last week, we're going to see if it's possible to utilize the serving line that was, it's in the kitchen, but we're hoping there's a way that we can separate the kitchen and just be able to use the serving line to kind of create some more flow and a little more breathing room for Ken. So Dick from the board of health agreed to come in and kind of hear what our plans are, to see if that's possible. So we are trying to think creatively, and Ken and his staff have done obviously a great job, and that little space was great when it was the pandemic and we didn't have many kids to serve, but now it's certainly a challenge. So we're trying to think creatively to kind of get through this situation till we know what the long-term plan for the cafeteria and the kitchen is.
The variety is still pretty good in that space, it's just we would love to do, you know, the full menu, and we can't break the full menu out of that one space. So again, down the road, we'll, again, new solutions that we can help with.
As we talked about, the ability to provide a full dining experience under current conditions at East Meadow Elementary and Junior/Senior High School. You know, it's actually affected East Meadow a little bit because we're, we're producing two meals out of one small elementary kitchen, so it's really tight, space has been really an issue.
They're fighting over ovens.
Fighting over oven space, so it's been a challenge, we've made it work. You know, we still got the freezer over here at the high school, which has been a huge bonus for us because the freezer space at the elementary school is, it's pretty small, if you've seen it, so. You know, we're feeding probably like 700, 800 meals a day, breakfast, lunch, so it's a, it's a lot of meals.
Yeah.
Not used to that over here in Duranbia, before everybody was free reduced, we were feeding maybe 500, so we're up like 200, 300 meals a day, so.
It's a good product.
Yeah.
It's a good product, yeah, definitely.
So we just showed you some pictures of what our temporary classroom setup is.
Ken and I are kind of working together, he built a quote for some additional heating ovens, some serving style, pieces of equipment that we could use at the high school to kind of help them out, keep the meals warm, prepare meals over here. Couple of issues is, one, we want to kind of see if our plan for that serving line kind of works out, which would free up some space and some other options, but also supply chain issues. We're hearing that some of these things could be six, eight weeks out if we ordered them, so it's, you know.
Yeah, we're looking at an oven in here that doesn't need any kind of filled ventilation, so, you know, we can cook, you know, chicken patties, fries, very fresh right there, onsite here for the students.
Other than that, smooth opening so far, which has been really good, comparing to last year, not here, but everywhere else, just a challenge. This year, we've got a great, great feeling about the, the smooth opening.
Yeah, it's nice to be back to North Carolina, everybody in the cafeteria, it's been nice to see all the students in there.
I do have a question, when you're talking about supply chain issues, is there a particular area of, I mean, could we do like you did for the, for the opening, kind of order ahead for some of that stuff to bypass it?
Yeah, we're looking at that right now, we're actually identifying what products we need, we're our staple products, so we're working on that already, but it's just a matter of, you know, it depends on, you know, it could be one thing one week, it could be chicken products one week, and it could be, you know, milk issues the next week, so it really depends on what, what's coming up. So we, so we're doing as much as we can to pre-plan and kind of allocate what we need for the first half of the year everywhere, so we've kind of identified that, but until we get the products shipped to our vendors, that's, that's when it becomes an issue, played around in the season of the square, so.
And do you, oh, sorry. And do you have the food storage that you need with the way we've got things set up? I know you made reference to a freezer in the high school, but is it, the way we have it, is it limiting space for other things that you would be, normally be able to stock up on?
No, that's not, it's just, just the volume we're dealing with, the space we have.
Okay.
Production.
Yeah, it's more production.
Areas. And we've actually, we do encourage the directors to make sure they have at least a couple weeks of supply on hand, so, which really helps, but again.
It's been a little tougher for us with space.
Exactly, but too much more than that, it's, it becomes an issue sometimes, so we'll keep a close eye on it, and if any issues come up that we foresee, we'll let Adam know. Right now, we don't know, we just, I hear rumblings that it could be tough and falling, so we'll see.
I have a clarifying question that got brought up before about the one free meal, so like if the child in the morning is like, "Ooh, I do want the breakfast," does that mean they don't get the lunch?
They get both.
You have breakfast and lunch.
They get one serving.
One of each.
Got it. Okay.
That's all right, but the way it was worded, I was like, wait.
Yeah.
So if they want seconds for lunch, they would have to pay for the second one.
The only other question I have is, sometimes when my kids take their own lunch from home, I used to have them go up and pay for milk, is that something they would still need to do? They have not gotten the, the hook spot to go ask yet, they keep all of them chicken out.
That's a great question, because it's really not part of the meal.
Correct, it's not a meal, which is fine if they have to pay for it.
Yeah, can you just check with our state rep, but I'm almost positive it's, they have to pay for that.
Like an add-on.
I try to tell the students, just grab it, we don't give it to your friends.
I was like, I think I could just get a ticket, and then I could just get a milk, and I was like, I'll ask, I'll ask, and so it was perfect.
Yeah, I think it's part of the, one of the regulations that we have to adhere to, adhere to. It makes sense, it would make sense, but.
Yeah, I'm fine having to pay for it, but I feel like, you know, rather than bring them up to school, it's perfect to have that.
Any other questions?
Fine, good.
Thanks so much for coming, it was great to see you guys in person, thank you so much.
Appreciate you guys, we'll keep you updated.
Let you know how we're progressing, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Vanguard donation checks, my favorite kind.
Hi, everyone, good evening. I emailed you an updated school committee presentation form. In full transparency, I, the check hasn't come in yet, we checked today, and I had the donor look into the account, it shows it was sent, so we're waiting today for the mail, unfortunately it hasn't come in, but what I do have for you is the letter that comes with the check, to show that it's been processed, it's been sent via mail, and we should be getting it, I would say, in the mail tomorrow by 3 o'clock. So I have attached that letter, it's in the link at the bottom where it says project three. So the key points, what I'm here to do is to, it's a couple different things under key points, vote to approve the bid by acne site construction, I wasn't sure, I think through speaking with Steven and Adam, if this was something that was under your purview to sign off on, or if the superintendent has that authority to sign off on for that bid. The second thing is to accept the donation check of $42,997.96. The check breakdown would include the full renovation of the basketball court outside to the tune of $33,780. The hoops being purchased from Atomic Sports, $4,198. The lining through Heartline, the ones that just did our school, $775. And I have an Amazon cart full of metal tables, which have the holes in them, that will allow umbrellas that are blue and white, one composite trash can, and two benches on either side of the basketball court, and that total for the Amazon cart is $4,244, which is the grand total for the project, as you see outlined here below. The donor chooses to remain anonymous, I respect 100% their wishes here, and just am super grateful for the check coming in. As you can see, I totaled everything for you, to see that the total amount was $50,000 of their donation, so we have $62 left, and I intend on using that, $62, but I just wanted you to see all the projects in its totality, all outlined here. So I'm looking for your vote to approve this final donation from the Wishful Thinking Vanguard Donation Fund.
I just want to clarify one thing, this is not a bid that you're approving, it's a quote that you would be.
Oh, accepting.
Essentially, essentially accepting, it did not have to go out to bid, we had to solicit three quotes, we solicited a lot more than three, so it's not a bid, it would just be giving authorization to whoever to sign the quote, so that work can.
Begin. Sorry. Thanks, businessman.
My only question would be, are we waiting on the items in the Amazon cart to make sure that the quote goes through as planned?
Yes, nothing has been, the hoops and, I mean, nothing has been purchased.
Because I definitely think it's great that, like, sometimes with a full, that's
Any other questions? I'd like to, again, thank the anonymous donor, that's just wonderful, this is going to be huge. If there's no other questions, I'll take a motion to accept as laid out by Ally.
I don't have a question, but when it is all done, like, I feel like we need to, like, brand and, like, have a picture, like.
Yes.
Ribbon cutting too, for people that may not drive by, like, make sure we're blowing it up.
And I think we could always write a thank you letter as well, and then if you can forward that along from us, that would be.
I'd love to do a ribbon cutting, I think that would be fun, when it's all done, you know, as long as it's not just a.
Or a basketball tournament for fundraiser.
Oh, there we go, even better. There you go. There you go. I like it.
Money to make.
Perfect. Well, with that, I mean, I'll make a motion to accept the Vanguard donation checks.
Here it is. I'll second.
Thank you, all those in favor? All right. Excellent.
If I could take a second and thank Ally, the work that has gone into this is been an incredible amount of work between soliciting quotes, coordinating between the different organizations, and finalizing things, and making sure we're working within the budget, and I think oftentimes, it's a thankless job to do that type of stuff, so I just want to acknowledge that and appreciate Ally for all the work that she's put into it.
I 100% agree.
Thank you, Ally, thank you.
I feel like we need to yell now.
Speak up.
Oh my gosh, I know.
So, I mean, more good news, we have a second check.
This one is not on the agenda.
It says checks. It is plural. Vanguard donation checks.
Is this one from Vanguard?
Not from Vanguard. Is that how it's worded on the?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, we can table it till next time.
All right, good news for next time.
Good news for next time, more money.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I just, I read your notes there.
Thank you. All right, 3D printing.
Is that for you?
Uh-uh.
So while they're getting set up, again, to kind of continue with the theme that we started last year about showcasing some of the work that's being done inside our schools, I think I've said for years that people drive by our schools every day, multiple times a day, and may not often know what's going on inside our schools, so this is a place where we continue on to showcase some of those things happening at both schools, we're trying to get some East Meadow folks here too, I know we've been junior, senior high school heavy, but we have Mr. Hagan here tonight from the junior, senior high school to show us a little bit about the 3D printing class that he is teaching this.
Yeah, so Mr. Reagan, Mark Hagan, so in my first year of teaching here at GHS, I'm an alumnus as well. So last year, I was a student teacher next door, and Ally had, you know, challenged the staff to bring new ideas, of like, how do we challenge the kids and, you know, bring something new. I got into this after I got out of the military, as a hobby to, like, keep my mind busy, but I realized pretty quickly that there's a lot of kids that are into it. Kids don't always care about academia, and I get that because I was that kid, so I like building stuff with my hands, and some of them do too, so it's about meeting them where they're at and not where we think they should be. So this summer, when I, when I got the job, you know, Ally called me and said, "Hey, what do you think about making that class a reality?" Sure, like, I can do that, and so she challenged me to create a curriculum and, you know, bring it to the school. So we have three of these printers, this is one of the ones from my classroom, it's a, the price point on it is, it's wonderful, it's the first model that I ever had, and I own a few of them now. It's great, so we have three of these in my classroom, and so what the kids are doing is they're learning basic design, so within the first week at school, hey, this is what 3D printing is. And for the majority of my class, I have 17 this semester and 18 next semester, it was looks of, I don't know anything about this. Well, good, none of you do. I'm fortunate to have a student leader in my class who does, who does it on the side, and I was able to make a deal to get him in my classroom for the full year. He's taken a different gym section, he's taken yoga, so that way I can, I can have him, so he made that sacrifice. But I'm very fortunate to have him, because I've got a large class, and it's nice to have somebody that understands the verbiage. So within the first week, they started building these, and you could see, even the kids that might not have been into it, were helping, and that was wonderful. So the challenge for the year for them, their final project, is to design and then create, physically create a model, a tool that can help somebody, whether they have a physical impairment, or something to help them. I've extended it now, because I've had multiple teachers within the school, who have said, "Hey, I really need this." Like, can your kid build it? One of my colleagues is a little vertically challenged, and so one of the students was like, "Can I make that teacher, like, a step school?" Sure, design it, make it. I've got a science teacher that has, you know, skeletons modeled in her classroom, and they're missing some pieces because they're a little old, so a student is scanning those and recreating the bones, and it's going to do that for her, so that's wonderful as well. Everything from cup holders for wheelchairs, to stands for some of the box fans that we have, and it gets hot sometimes in the upstairs of the high school, so simple things like that. You know, my kids were able to make this, just a little Roman column, took a couple hours, and, you know, they pulled it off the internet, yeah, but they made a physical product out of a piece of plastic. So. So the very first thing that they made as they were building and calibrating was a pig. So we gave it to Ally because she believed in me to bring this to the school. So that's on her desk now, a little piggy bank. So all three of the printers are working. And throughout the year, they're going to work through design. They're going to work through calibration, you know, printing things at a certain speed or a certain temperature, how that affects it. Whether it's a solid piece or it has a hollow piece in it, it's all different. So that's the basics. And this can go in a lot of ways. It can get more advanced. Like I said, I own a few of these. I got really into it as just a way to keep my mind calm. So we go from, you know, melting plastic to resin, right? This is a solid piece that I pulled off the internet, cost me nothing, and in 11 hours it printed fully, right? With a little bit of sandpaper, like it's a complete product. Right? So it's great to see a kid think of something and then a few hours later it's real.
What is it?
Uh, that's a lightsaber.
That's what I was like, that's what I'm wondering.
I have a bit of a Star Wars obsession. And so in my classroom, there's Star Wars helmets.
No, I didn't.
There's full-size ones that are there that I printed just to try and inspire the kids, you know? So if this does go further, like I said, this is a basic model, but it's the first one I had and it's a wonderful thing to learn off of. If we get more advanced, that's where I see it going. It's purchasing eventually resin printers. It's okay, you're not going to break it. Best thing is everything can be fixed with super glue, right? But so that's the goal, right? Is to get more advanced, get the kids, keep interested, keep designing and keep building. And so I put it in the notation, but it was the first thing in my syllabus was, "You're going to fail at printing." Like I've been doing this now for a couple of years. I fail all the time. You know, in between soccer practice, I stepped back to my apartment to go see one of my prints and it failed. You know, that doesn't make you a failure in this. Welcome to it. You're going to make a mess, clean it up and do it again. So that's where I see it going. Ally, do you'd like to add anything to it?
No, I think just important to know that we purchased three of these. So this unit obviously came in a million pieces, which was really cool. And then this, tell everybody how far this goes, like a wheel.
So an entire wheel of filament. This should, famous last words, should last the entire semester for students. So each of the printers has one individual. If you're making something large, right, I mean, you can take an entire thing of filament. So the helmets that I printed will print for four days straight and take an entire roll. Our kids are not going to build something that large immediately. But if we get to that point, we absolutely can. And it's pretty cost effective. A spool of filament's $20. And the amount of things you can make off of it will last an entire semester. So it's encouraging. There's a lot of places you can go with it, a lot of things you can do. If you go and you start doing resin, you know, you're looking at $25, $30 a bottle. But that bottle's going to last you weeks at a time if you're printing a lot. Yeah.
I want to play with it now.
And it's funny because the teachers pop in, random teachers will pop in my classroom and like, "What are you printing today?" They just want to see what it's going to be, what are you going to do? My classroom...
Bless you.
Is full of those things all over just to try and inspire the kids. You know, I'm very thankful to David over there who helped to install the software that we needed. It's all free and open source, which is wonderful as well. Kids aren't buying stuff. If they had one of these at home and they thought that they wanted to buy a product, yeah, they could do it. But most of it's open source. And now they can create it. Now they have the tools to go into their computers and build it. So that's been a lot of the work that they're doing as well.
I'm going to throw another shot, another shameless plug. So what got you, your mind stirring about this, Ally? How was it being used last year when Mr. Hagan was doing it all on his own? For Mr. Crea?
Right, so... Mark was making parts with his own printers at home, supplying our design, our robotics programming that we have for Project Lead the Way, and making the parts for that class, the gears and all those things. And he could speak more to it. But when I learned of that, you know, I went up and thanked him and that's kind of how it started. I was like, "Hey, thanks, that's really cool." You know, I didn't know anything about these things. But he was explaining, "Oh, I do this for fun and I built that and that." And he's pointing all around Mr. Ray Sein's room and incredible products. And so that's where it started and, you know, Mr. Crea was like, "Hey, can we talk one day?" I was like, "Sure." And then he just hit me with this grand idea. And once you get something, right, once the mind starts spinning, you're like, "How can we make that happen?" And to be honest with you, all of this is for under $1,000. But the coolest part, right, is the first day we went in and they were all lined up. Remember that day? Two of them were identical and they were matching and the third one, I don't know what group it was, but they set it up and it looked backwards. So he's like, "No, this is good. I want them to fail. It's so important for them to see this and to fix it." My goodness, but the kids turned it around like that. And just to be part of that, I'm like, "What are we going to do a second semester?" And it's like, "Well, they're breaking them down and they're rebuilding them." So it's just really cool. So I think this can go so far. You know, we're thinking of how we can, you know, secure funds to make this through MakerBot, right? That's where a lot of the work is going through to bring it to another level. So we have a basic class and then, you know, a next level. And how we can make this, you know, this vision just continue on this path. There's a lot of students that are interested. One parent did reach out and it was really cool. We snapped some photos and then I reached out to the parents and said, "Would you mind if we post this?" And they responded with a picture of their child at home practicing 3D printing on their own printer. So that's the reality. It's really cool because they make figurines, you know, like Mario Kart, like all those little figurines I use in the stores. Yeah, there's a lot to do here.
It's for the Rams, the next one.
The Ram. Oh, we're doing a golden ram.
Where's Grammy Blue? We need Grammy Blue.
No, this is golden. This is like the golden ticket.
Oh.
This is the special ram. So we're coming up with all sorts of ideas to try to recognize students. You know, we have the student of the month and we're going to have that one golden ram of the month. So Mark has volunteered to make 10 of them. So we can begin that work to endless possibilities or something like this.
So again, I think too, like we bring in a program. We wrote a grant for Project Lead the Way to bring in automation robotics. I think very similar in some ways, our design and modeling class and the science and technology class that are all in our seventh and eighth grade, built for middle school. They identify a need based on the automation robotics. Like the kits are really expensive, the most expensive part about it. So the grant helped us buy it, purchase it upfront. But then through our teachers and leadership, like find alternative ways to be resourceful and, you know, not become fully self-sustaining in terms of producing our own supplies, but like being able to sustain a portion of it, which wasn't always possible. I also really want to say that Mr. Hagan, appreciate that mindset about, "I want people to make mistakes." I think that's like a shift that we hear about in education that sometimes I think people struggle with, but that's how we learn. We make mistakes and we learn from them. We don't want you to make mistakes because then you made a mistake and you failed. It's because it's an opportunity to learn something new and to adjust and to see if it works the next time. And you might fail again too. And, right, I think we all know that that is life. And I think doing it in these ways that are more hands-on than we might be used to, our students might be useful, just provides them a different perspective. So I want to thank you guys and thank this committee for their support in allowing us to try these things out. And because sometimes we fail too and that's sometimes difficult to come talk to the principal or talk to the superintendent or school committee about an area where we took a shot and we missed. But I think sometimes it ends up in, it results in things like this. And I think that's important for our kids and families to see, so.
That's all I've got. Any questions?
What grades are accessing this right now?
So right now I've got freshmen through seniors. So it's a mix. Originally I had nine on the docket and now it's at 17. So I got a lot of questions the first day of, "Hey, Mr. Hagan, why can't I be in this class?" Don't talk to guidance. I'll take it.
And I think too, like when we're thinking about those pathways, the fact that the design and modeling that Mr. Kearns is teaching and the automation and robotics that Mr. Crea are teaching are seventh and eighth grade classes right now, opportunities for seventh and eighth grade students that it's not like, "Oh, I took these two classes in middle school and now what? They have this." And, you know, while this might not be a linear path to the cybersecurity class that upperclassmen are now taking too, like there's these connections in, right? Like I guess it's grounded in that design and modeling theme.
Yeah, I think there's definitely a translation between two and what Mr. Crea does. And I'm going to give him the shameless plug because, you know, I've known him for 20 years. But he hooked me up with this, you know, just said, "Hey, could you do this? Like I know you have a printer." Yeah, and so I printed them 50. An hour. It just solved the problem. But it translates. And now what Mr. Kearns does with that, I've got two of my students that, I didn't assume they knew as much about modeling as they do. And they walked in, I asked them to make a wrench in a 3D model. And they were done before I was done giving instruction. "You've done this before?" "Yeah, we learned it with Mr. Kearns." "Well, great, now you can teach somebody else in the class." So that's, it's great to see how it builds.
The coding classes that are happening, the app class that we had last year, the AP Computer Science, right? It becomes like this pathway that you can take multiple classes in that are non-traditional.
Any other questions? It's so cool. Thank you.
Fantastic. Awesome.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Come on up, Nancy. How are you?
I'm hanging in.
It's great to see you in person.
Thank you. So every two years we're required to update the medication administration policy. So it's in alignment with the state regulations. And part of my responsibility being the individual that signs off on it is attending to trainings. And I just completed the second one for review in August. And they normally have this graph that goes down with regulations. So you have to make sure that our policy is matching them and that's where that, these edits come from. So the highlighted areas are the new additions to the policy based on that state rubric that they provided. So basically, you know, the biggest thing too is making sure, we're starting to see some alternative and homeopathic meds coming in. So making sure that they're in alignment with the national formulary so they can't just be anything that's coming off the market. They have to be on these formularies in order to administer it in school. Just making sure that nursing is providing healthcare plans for prescribed as-needed or daily medications. And just kind of beefing up what we do and making sure that what we're doing is reflected in the policy to keeping students safe and making sure that the medication administration policy and process is being followed each time it's given, whether it's a school nurse or if we're delegating to a trained school staff member.
And all the highlights of the additions?
All the highlights are the additions, yes. So they're small, but again, like it's kind of a tedious process going through, making sure everything's in alignment, but just making sure all our i's are dotted or t's are crossed.
Do you need a vote for them all?
Yes, because we are updating our policy. And then if this is the policy that's accepted, I do need your signature, Ann Stevens. And then I'll be sending this to this school physician for his John Hancock as well, so.
Any questions or comments on the policy? If not, it says draft. It doesn't say vote on here. Is it all right to vote or do we have to bring it to the next time?
She was ready to vote. I wasn't sure if something like this policy, subcommittee would want to look at. I think it's somewhat different than the typical policies that the subcommittee might be looking at. But I just felt like bringing it here and letting the committee discuss it.
Well, it sounds like she has to follow, you know, a certain format.
Yeah, I think it's one of those policies that we get from Kimberly and we're like, "We're not touching it. We're going to update her name and things like that." So I don't think there'd be any revisions.
Agreed.
Will this be added to the handbooks?
The student handbooks?
Well, I'm just curious, only because like some of it does talk to, could be important for parents to know.
So we would have it posted on the school health page and we can certainly make it available in the communications sitting home by the principals.
Great. I really only asked that backwards so that we didn't have to amend that. But okay, yep, so this will be on the website or somewhere in there, right?
Is it handed, like individually to parents if they're...
If they request it, we can print it out, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if like it was something that once they come in with a child's medication then they get a hard copy versus...
We typically don't do that, but if they ask for it, we can. We're normally explaining the processes they're going through it. We have to count the meds with them, make sure that the medication that's in the bottle is matching the label from the pharmacy because we've had issues where what's in the bottle is not what's on the label. And just doing all of those things, like we have a picture of the kids on the bottles or the containers from the pharmacy now and on their med orders. So really making sure those checks are in place because unfortunately errors do happen and we want to prevent that. Right now at East Meadow, there's five daily meds at the high school. There's six. Last year here, we over 15. So we want to make sure that we're reducing that time for errors. So we're just trying to keep it really safe.
Can I have a motion to approve this updated policy?
I'll make the motion to approve the updated medication administration policy.
Can I have a second?
One second.
All those in favor? All right. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we do have the... Oh, I'm sorry. Did I just jump ahead?
The enrollment dashboard.
So again, the enrollment dashboard's updated as of the end of August. And an added feature now that this would be year two of the dashboard, you do have a tab down in the bottom for the previous year. So if you're comparing any numbers or anything like that, you would have access to what those numbers looked like a year ago. I think one thing to highlight is, I think we talked about just general enrollment. Our foundation budget, if you recall, is built on our resident enrollment. We have 33 new residents enrolled as of the end of August and an additional four residents who have returned from either choicing out or from Pathfinder. That does not account for new K or pre-K students either. So if you count the new K and pre-K, that 47 or so becomes closer to 110.
Now, the six that are like in first grade, for example, that could potentially be the children coming from Children First also?
Are not included on this because are...
Like they enrolled in first grade, but they're new, they're residents.
Yes, yes, sorry. I thought you were thinking about, yes.
Because they were possibly at Children First?
Yeah. Those six could have come from Children First as new. Yes.
I think there were six that were at Children First, I think. I feel like I remember that number. I looked at something. I looked at it on my phone and now I can't find it on my computer. I must have moved it somewhere.
You just type in enrollment dashboard and that should come up.
So considering we're very close to October 1st, data collection time period, it looks like we'll be in good shape for enrollment numbers.
Looks that way. Again... It's right, and I can say, we haven't seen like a dramatic drop-off in the last two weeks since September hit. So it is looking like, right, that number where we're at now, 728, we were never at 728 last year. I think 725 or 724 was our high last year. So not too far off, but I think our numbers in, from August last year was 708, September 703, so.
Yeah, that 724 was never around on October 1st.
Right.
This is good.
So yeah, maybe that'll be a positive thing.
We need no one to move for two weeks.
Just no movement. Just no movement.
Yeah, just that's what I mean, like no, no, nothing to move for for two weeks.
The school choice out, am I missing that? Where is that number?
Can you explain to me the student withdrawals?
Yeah, I don't see the out either.
It's in column M, right?
Choice out, monthly withdrawal breakdown would be the.
Never mind, it says return.
Row twenty-one, twenty-two, column J. Choice out.
No enrollment, choice in.
It's a different chart. If you go monthly withdrawal breakdown down below.
Also, it can't be row twenty-one now.
Forty-one.
Yeah, forty-one.
Those are standing, so.
Yeah, it's in the forties.
Yeah, so it starts with monthly enrollment, then it goes monthly withdrawal.
Oh, yeah, I see. Yep. Were we always looking at the previous month? We have been, right?
Yeah, because it's a month behind.
Right.
And typically, we're doing it at the first meeting in the month, but because we did our retreat, the first meeting in the month.
It was just interesting to even like knowing that there's been movement even in the last two weeks. Like, it's very interesting.
Yeah, I think last year, we went down five students overall from the August number to what we the number at the end of September, that October first number.
Now, the thirty-three or whatever in new residents, was that all at the high school level? Someone told me they were all at the high school.
Twenty here, twenty of East Meadow, thirteen at the junior senior high school. I'm still not finding that school choice.
Forty-one.
Out.
Row forty-one, column J.
Is this all, so this is.
Monthly withdrawal breakdown.
So there was thirty-six in August of new school choice out?
It's all of the above, the grand total is thirty-six of.
But.
Just throw off three.
Correct, correct, but just for August. That's new.
That's when you're going to get your most movements is in the summer.
Yes.
Yes.
And these are new, like if there's a student that left last year freshman year to go to a private school, they are out of the count.
If you go, I think, over to the.
I just want to make sure it's like not being double dipped.
Because it's a new year. Nope.
So do they have to, they don't have to re-out every year, right? The ones that are out, they're out. It's only if they came back in and then left again. Okay. So someone that went to Pope freshman year, that's going sophomore year, is already counted. It's already counted. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was still understanding.
The big number is the grade seven and then grade nine, which is common trend.
Yeah.
And I would just, gosh, the seven twenty-eight wouldn't be the foundation.
Foundation, because it's not all resident.
Because that includes school choice in. That's why I'm looking for the school choice out number, because that's an important number to go in there.
But there's the graphs on the bottom.
Yeah.
That show the resident, resident, non-resident, intuptioned students. And so September twenty twenty-two, it says six twenty-four as resident.
Ten seven charters out in August.
Yep. So that's really, so I just, again, I want to, the seven twenty-eight includes school choice in, which is not, we don't receive that money in the foundation. We receive the school choice out money in our foundation. So that's the number that would be inclusive in the foundation role. I just want to make sure we see that.
Which would be six twenty-four, right?
We see the seven twenty-eight, don't think that's what our foundation budget would be calculating.
Six twenty-four would be.
Yeah, you're correct.
Yep.
Go to the withdraw.
And again, it doesn't matter until October first. I mean, it matters, but October first snapshot is when it comes.
I have a comment. I was just noticing, Stephanie, when you were talking about the seven and nine, but if you look over, now I just lost it.
I'm like, I was looking at the withdrawal breakdown.
Yes, but four out of grade seven relocated out of state, interestingly enough. It goes like this.
Yeah, it's a high number.
Yeah. It's a lot of numbers, I feel like, so that would have reduced it by six, you know?
Yep.
We also got one choice in and two resident enrollments in that grade.
Is McDuffie considered private or charter?
Private.
Private.
Yeah, so it's good when they're versus the charters are not good.
The charter is so much more.
The charters are expensive.
If you look at the bottom, yeah, so right, twenty-two students out to charter costing three hundred and sixteen thousand in school year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Versus sixty.
Versus sixty choicing out, that costs three hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Sometimes they they got to fix that because it's just not right.
Three times as much, or, yeah.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Wow, three sixth grade applications for no seats. That's crazy.
I'm curious what the most popular charter school is. Is that the immersion school?
For Grammy residents specifically? I couldn't find that out.
There's so many now, I'd be surprised if there's even one in particular.
I think Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion is up there, PBPA, it'd be close.
Westfield Tech's getting very popular. That one's very expensive.
Only nine through twelve, though, right?
Yes, PBPA is nine through twelve, the Chinese immersion.
Okay, that's good.
Would they tend to only have certain enrollment periods, too, based on grades, like K, six, nine?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Audrey, your question was most popular charter.
No, it's fine, don't even worry about it.
I don't get it.
There's just, there's so many.
I know.
Yeah, so Adam makes a good point that it is based on the resident enrollment, but.
That number's still going to be up. We're getting more and more numbers, you know?
Just wanted to clarify that.
No, I appreciate it because I get all excited and I would have, I would have been like, well, wait, what the hell? Okay. All right. Anything else on the dashboard? Okay, next up, school capacity.
Looking at the twenty-one, twenty-two resident, but this would have been from the end of the year, so it's apples to oranges, it's five sixty-five. So I'm going to compare those two numbers right now. Our first meeting's October fourth, so I'll probably have the dashboard, but there might be some cleanup work to do on resident and stuff like that comparing, so we can keep that on for both meetings in October, too. So capacity, the leadership team, we've got together a couple of times to work on the questions that the committee has posed to us, working on a daily or a couple of daily schedule options for if there was to be a move, to move the sixth grade to the junior senior high school. Also, trying to work out some scenarios as to what implications continuing to have students at East Meadow might mean, if we needed to move spaces or share spaces. So we should have that for the October fourth meeting. Obviously, we've been in touch with Chartwells and some others. Again, I know this is, is and has been a charged topic in the community, and I just want to say that I think everybody here and everybody at home, like, we go into this wanting what's best for our students. I know in the past, it's felt like an adversarial conversation, and I hope it doesn't have to turn into that, because ultimately, we all want what is best for every one of our students. I believe that this committee trusts me and the leadership to put students in good position, to be successful, and to be supported, and to be safe and secure. And I think, I hope that families feel the same way, but I also recognize that decisions like this also bring in emotions, and that's difficult, too. So I just feel like acknowledging that and trying to work through it together, I don't think this is a situation that anyone here has created. I think we want to be thoughtful about it, and the conversation's gone on for a long time. And like I've said to the committee, I think there's creative ways to make either way work. And I think there's pros and cons to both decisions. And if this was an easy decision, we probably wouldn't be talking about it tonight, because the decision would have been made two years ago or three years ago, whatever it first had. And I think I'm coming into this with good intentions, and I believe everybody here at this table is doing the same. Certainly to the community, if people have questions or feel like they're getting misinformation, I'm happy to set up a time to call. They can contact me directly or call my office. Certainly can attend a meeting here. Obviously, if you're attending a meeting here, it's harder to have a discussion, because we don't go back and forth during public comment. But I'm happy to try to clarify things for people. And I don't think any one of us up here knows exactly where it's going to land, but I'm confident wherever it lands that, you know, I'm committed to doing right by our students and making sure that they're safe, supported, and cared for, because I think that's the most important job that we all have. So I just feel like putting it out there, I think we've started to hear and see some murmurs of this stuff come up. And I think I said something similar to this at the onset of the budget process last year, that it doesn't always have to be adversarial, it's nobody's fault. And it's a difficult situation. It's a really challenging situation, and we've looked at it from every angle, every plane, every, and it's just going to be some decision regardless of what that decision, some parts of that decision that are going to feel like it's a square peg in a round hole. And, you know, I think the leadership team has kind of taken the same feeling that I have, the same stance that I have, that whatever the decision is, we're going to, we're committed to making it work in the best way possible. And that doesn't mean that there won't be some hiccups along the way. But I hope people want to be hopeful in finding solutions and, you know, not pointing blame because it's a situation that I think we've all inherited, and we want to do best by our students. So just feel like my own personal and professional piece, like, I wanted to get that out there to all of you.
So I really appreciate that. I am in a hundred percent agreement with you. I also want to reiterate and make it very clear that there's been no decision made. I've heard from people, I've seen and heard things posted online, whatever, that we have once again made a decision and are, you know, trying to be, I think the word was sneaky. And, you know, I find that insulting to myself and to everybody here on this committee, because we're working hard on this, and we've been very transparent, I feel like. We've talked about it ad nauseam. We've been, I can say solidly for at least eight months, it's been on every agenda. We've been talking about it. So I just want it to be very clear, I want to echo what Steven said, if people have questions, rather than just posting on things or, you know, ask us a question, email us, email Steven, you know. We do care what people think, but ultimately, we have a decision that we have to make. And I think we all want to do what's best, and that's why it's been so hard, is because you can see things from both sides, you can, you know, you can put yourself in a parent's shoes, you can kind of do that. And then the other thing is, we have really great kids here in town, and I, I didn't like it when it was said before, and I don't like it now, because I have one of those big kids. They're not, they're not monsters. So just be careful how, how and what people say, because you're talking about someone else's kids, and you're making sort of accusations about behaviors and and things, and it's not really cool. So that's all I have to say about that. But I appreciate all the work that the leadership team is doing, and, you know, I, I also appreciate the committee, we've been having really fruitful conversations, and I think we've been doing a really good job not getting spun up and kind of keeping on a forward path. And I've been trying to direct, direct that, but it's really your guys, that's perfect grammar right there, by the way, yeah, your input and ability to have really meaningful conversation. And I just want to let you all know that I appreciate all of the hard work that you guys do, because I know it's, we don't just leave it when we close our computers and leave. Like, we think about it, we hear things, you know, it's with us a lot, all day, every day. And so it's not, it's not unnoticed how much you guys have put into that. So I just want you to know that, I really appreciate it.
I just want to say, too, as part of like this process, I've, I mean, the decision itself is not going to go away, that it's a difficult one, like regardless of whatever direction we go in. But I've just felt better about kind of chipping away and taking off like the different layers of questions and, you know, information and kind of getting down to like where, where we need to be in order to make like the best informed decision. And I think getting to that last meeting, whichever, whichever one it was before, we had the hour-long or hour-and-a-half-long discussion, fully, you know, on in our meeting, I felt like it was really helpful to walk away from there knowing, like, we were requesting like this information, you know, from the leadership team that would give us more details about either option, to then kind of come back again and then continue on like in down the road. Because I just feel like it's really kind of just helped whittle away and chip away at anything in, in the way of making a really good informed decision.
And I think that the committee continues to do the work outside of what's being taped here. I know there's been more building visits and things like that, too, than walkthroughs, and the process has not ended when the cameras turn off either from that standpoint, and that's important to note.
And I also think the last time the school committee, even though it was a different committee, voted on this, I think it was pretty clear, if I remember, that that probably wasn't the end of this conversation. And I think in some form or fashion, this, this conversation has continued since then, maybe sometimes more at the leadership level or with individuals, but the conversation's never really gone away. You know, we had the capacity committee, and they provided a lot of great information last year. And so it's been this ongoing conversation and, you know, but I think the more that we look at it, the more that we realize that it's not just going to appear like, oh, the easy decision is here, we found it, because we've, we've looked really hard for that, and people have worked really hard for that. And it is, in some way, it becomes this numbers game. And what your enrollment is, right, coming from the enrollment dashboard to this, what your enrollment is one month might be different the next month, and like over the course of the year, that could change dramatically. So it's difficult, and I said it about the budget, we make these decisions based on information that we have in April or May for issues that we're going to encounter in September, October, November. And it's built on projections, not actuals. And when the actual doesn't match with the projection, you have new issues, so.
With numbers from a year before.
Right, right. But I do think, I echo everybody, what everybody's saying, I think the process, the conversation has been productive, but it hasn't been easy. And I hope that we get you some clarity on some of the questions that you've had and get you some more information, and we can continue that discussion.
Thank you.
Of course.
Anything else on school capacity that you all want to talk about? Because we did have it on the agenda, so if there was anything else that, you know, anyone's thought about or wanted to add, or questions after walkthroughs, or anything else that we want to, is there any, any anything?
The only additional question I had or thought from Steven to add to the questions, if it's not already on there, is potential pre-K programming, or like what it looks like compared to.
I think that.
I think it was, I think it already is, but just to.
Like the impact of the sixth grade staying here.
That's kind of what I thought. It just, it resonated when we did the walkthrough, that I was like, oh, I wanted to make sure it was on there, as just a, something that we would touch on in either capacity, like what it would look like.
As just a, something that we would touch on in either capacity, like what it would look like.
That's a tricky one, I agree.
Oh, it definitely is. But that was just on the, one of my big takeaways was like, oh, we need to make sure that, no matter which way, that's brought up.
Because that's another one that can change like this. If a new student turns, do you point that, like, there it is.
Right, so that's, and one thing Megan had, I think she got it yesterday or today, is the up-to-date census data from the town. So we're looking at that as well. And again, those numbers change, but it's that, I think, next year, it's that pre-K age was like 28, 29. Okay, that's manageable, but then it goes up to 50 and 56 for the next two years, so.
Yeah, it's like two years out, I think.
Yeah.
But that's total number of pre-K students that...
It wasn't pre-K, it was on the census, the numbers that it had.
Right, so, right, they would be age-appropriate at that school year.
Right, because some of this, alright.
But that could have changed since...
That's also a census, assuming everyone's coming here too. That doesn't account for daycare, you know. That's where I get myself hung up when we're talking about some of this stuff is some of those numbers, it's a total number of people. But we know we had a bunch of families move in with younger, like younger enrollment. So that number could be, could be higher.
And the people that don't fill out the census.
And then also, a lot of people don't consider the public school pre-K because they might do a programmatic pre-K that's part of their daycare solution, right? Where, you know, it's a...
We actually almost more project that towards like the kindergarten potential numbers, really more than anything.
Oh, 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 okay.
You know what I mean? If there's 56 three-year-olds in Granby right now, then chances are coming to kinder age, there's going to be about 50, let's say, six move. Or there could be 55, like depending on how the movement...
I see, okay, so you're not just talking about it for pre-K.
Capacity presentation, the projections are for the K, not the pre-K. So I misspoke there, but, yeah.
So, and then also, there's the potential that pre-K becomes, Megan had mentioned like becomes mandatory, right? Like where we have, where you have to do...
There's been some conversation about universal pre-K.
That's what it was, universal pre-K.
If and when it happens.
That's it, that's going to be a whole...
That's a whole other thing.
That's a whole nother ball of wax.
There's a whole, like, well, even like, in an ideal world, we'd have a full-day four-year-old pre-K program. Look at Steven looking at me like, you're going there. But I am, like, in an ideal world, we'd have a full-day four-year-old pre-K program to get them ready for full-day kindergarten. And then the other section of the class would be two half-day sessions. But sometimes that doesn't work out because the numbers you have in front of you and for peer need and it just doesn't always pan out. It's a numbers game.
And it's tough when we even use the like term "ideal world" because in an ideal world, you'd have two extra classrooms and not even be having the conversations. Like, I hate to say that, but like, we can go on a tailspin all night, like, all night long on ideal.
Is the problem. It's because you can play that numbers game until the first day of school, like.
Well, even until, even after. Right, like, yeah. So, and then one of the things that I've thought about when we talk about this is the class size that we have for all of these classes is based on what we have for numbers at the time, right? Like who's in the system coming in. So if we have some of these larger classes, like we've talked about, and you have people move in, those classes then become larger. So you could have, you know, you could end up with 30 or something in a class because of, you know, we did two sixth grades or whatever. Like, you know, we've always tried to keep our class size on the smaller side so that if we do have some movement or whatever, we've got that. But those, I don't know, the more I think, I get myself all tied up.
Yeah, I think, yeah, there's a number of ways that it can be, right? People moving in, people moving out, choice, retention, things like that. Like, there's all these ways that that class can go from 48 to 51, like that.
And I guess just with my note about pre-K, I was more specifically to looking at, because I know this came up last time, just outside of what we offer now. Like, there are other options. And like, I just would like a quick insight of other options. Like, with the programming we have now versus what it could look like if we, say we went to just half-day sessions. Like, what, what are the different models? I don't, sometimes I feel like we...
We are just half-day sessions right now.
Right now, we're only half-day.
Three half-day sessions.
So there's three half-day sessions. Okay.
I'm going to make sure I'm understanding this question. So are you asking...
I...
Are you, so if sixth grade stays, what's the impact on pre-K? And if sixth grade were to go?
Basically, yes. And like, what could we...
In each scenario, what are potential impacts?
What are potential impacts? And what is a potential flexibility that we can do? I know, just so that pre-K is its own world to speak where like there's a bit more of, I don't want to say that there's more flexibility because there's other things that we have to follow. But just what could it look like? I mean, I spent a lot of time looking at every other K, or pre-K to sixth school in our surrounding, and every model is slightly different, right? There's all, there's so many potentials and I just more, what could it be?
Give some of the examples of what...
What could it look like?
Like, some of the documents that you had looked at, that you, you know, is it like a pay for pre-K?
Oh, there was some, the, the majority that I looked at that were pre-K to six, I believe there were nine different districts I looked at. The majority, yes, had a lot of pay options. But there were some really funky, not that we would want to do this because it would be inconvenient, but some of them had three half-day options, only three full-day options. To, like, there's a lot of, like, I was just surprised the difference from district to district. And, well, actually, all of them I found were pay options. Every single one except for Granby and Southampton were the only ones I saw that were not. So I just know that there's a lot of different models. So I guess just what would the impact be? Is there anything we could do creatively if we had to change anything that we're doing now? Is it possible? Is that even a potential? Or is the model that we're in right now, what we have to use, the most...
Yeah, no, we certainly have flexibility with the mod... I, I guess, we can share out what we have and if there's questions about it because I think that there's layers to this, right? Because then if we project down, so say, we're only going to do two half-day pre-Ks. So we're reducing what we're offering. Then we get into a situation where there could be more early intervention referrals, right? Like, you start to get upside down in that way, and then it's costly down the route, right? So I think if we could share the information and if, based on that, you have more specific questions, that might be helpful because we can give options, but I don't think we're going to click on every potential.
Of course, no, and I wouldn't expect that. I just, I couldn't get past just right now. I almost wish that preschool was full and we were like, look, we have these two rooms. And that, but the fact is currently, we...
And because we have integrated, there's specific ratios, so if we have five VIPs...
I think what's tricky though, and you're skirting around.
I am, there's, right, right.
What is that?
It's three half-days. So basically, one room is only used half the day. So like, you have a whole classroom that's being used half the day versus like having four half-day programs or...
Right, but we're using that teacher's, special ed teacher, to supplement services that we weren't able to offer because of other...
But could those services, do those need to be in a full-size classroom? I guess like that's where it's tricky. Like, we have a space issue. And I'm just going to say it, like, we did the walkthrough. This building has so many, unfortunately, just, you know, tons of small rooms. Like, we have this space, I don't want to say we don't have the space. We don't have the space that we can utilize appropriately.
So, yes, full-day pre-K could be an option. And part of it was we gambled, knowing that we would have the two Ks. And if that went up a couple, what flexibility might we need there too, right? So we were gambling on a number of levels with the setup for this year.
Just to be, I mean, right, because...
But yeah, you're right, there is that space for half of the day for this year, yeah.
And luckily, this year, we didn't need necessarily it. But going forward, we do. So we just have to make sure we're using it to its fullest potential.
Yeah, yeah. And we actually had that exact conversation yesterday. Like, a scenario where if you needed to have a third, sixth grade this year, that home room is in the library. And then when fourth grade comes in the library, the sixth graders go to the fourth grade class and the teacher follows them there.
And let me ask one follow-up question to the half...
These are all scenarios that we've... I just want to make sure we're being clear about that, so.
But the way it stands now with those three sections of pre-K, how much maneuverability do you have if you have an influx of referrals happen between December and March where you have students coming in? Like, how many openings might you have in those three sections to accept students that turn three and beyond?
Yeah, we have that information. And I know we have a couple coming in October, November that we've accounted for, that we know that they're coming, they're turning three. Beyond that, I'd have to double-check with Megan.
Because I feel like that's a common thing that districts get stuck with too. And then you're either looking at hiring additions, additional staff, waivers, all of the above versus weighing out what point you are in the year and opening that fourth, fifth, sixth section to accommodate an influx of students identified with services that you need to... And I mean, that can happen January, that can happen February, that can happen...
Well, you said we don't have a teacher. So, I mean, we would be, we have a...
But schools are responsible for providing the services. So then that's where the budget doesn't match the needs, but you have to...
If they're just being utilized somewhere else.
So if we have...
I, I'm just throwing it out there, like, it's just...
Can you just follow this through for me? Because I truly don't understand. So there's utilization of services that we have to provide. We don't necessarily have to provide a peer one-to-one, right? Like, if, if, so if we bring...
There's ratio, so you can't obviously force peers to come into pre-K.
But you can do just, we can just offer the services, right? Like, you, the, we have to provide the services. So do the services have to be in a full classroom?
It depends on what they are.
Right.
Okay, because that's what I don't know. And I think a lot of people don't know.
So if they're like a related service, like a justice speech and language, like you may be able to just do kind of like a drop-in model where you're just here, depending on what it is for like a session of speech.
There's some OT that...
But if, once you start like identifying additional services or other areas, then you're kind of layering that, those needs in. And that's when you get to kind of like that, that integrated approach where you're looking at, you know, that pre-K setting. So, and I guess that's, that's the piece for me where it's like, you know, I live that world where people are like really scrambling, pulling their hair out, like identifying staff and support services and space and all of those things to kind of like figure out what that looks like for like a remainder of the year or half a year or whatever it is. And it's, it's tricky. So it's just to kind of keep that balance in mind too. Again, there's no easy...
And the thing is, is that our number is never set. Like, we never turn a body away. There's no, that, people can school choice in up until like the last day of school, right? Like, we, there's no...
Well, but that would be based on the numbers that we've already pre-decided.
And if people can move in.
And it wouldn't be for preschool.
Right, yeah, exactly.
I don't think it's a bad idea to...
I just think that's a...
Come to an agreement when, like, we would potentially cut off school choice either, but that's...
But if we have seats that are open and, you know, like, our numbers are constantly fluff... And school choice is not the perfect one to use because we control how many of that. But it's really residents. I mean, residents can move in, we can't control that. We want them to come. So we can do all sorts of things to protect. But, you know, you could have, you know, the Duggars move in and have 27 kids. And, you know, we don't have the room to accommodate them.
Well, and just an extra spin on this too, is that I've learned too, is that when Granby counts their numbers in every classroom, they count every student that goes in that room, whether they're full-time in that room or not too. So, yeah, that's kind of something important to keep in mind is, you know, there might be students that are in there for a couple of hours, depending on whatever their...
Yeah, that was my, one of my things, like the butts in seats, kind of, you know, if, if we're...
But there is a button seat, at some point, you got to have the space for them.
Right.
They are a member of that class.
It's such a hard number to true up to, especially like...
Because they're in and out.
If, like, if we have effective interventions where students are in it for four weeks and then out of it, and then somebody else is in a different intervention for the next four to six weeks, right? Like, so that number is, that is a hard number to true up to. But I hear what you're saying, right? There is that open seat or open seats for that period of time.
Or not, but...
Or not. And if you knew somebody else was going to be out of that, that class next, so, right? Jen's out of this class now, but then Stephanie's going to be out, and then Audrey. So you know you have that seat. It just doesn't always happen like that, right? Like, especially if you're using the benchmark assessment date and things like that. That's happening at different times throughout the year, so.
It's just, it's really hard to figure out those moving targets.
Yeah, that number is really, like, Megan and I talked about that this week. It's such a hard number to true up to.
All right, I was writing down notes because I, I keep waking up in the middle of the night thinking about stuff. So I don't know if I should...
Very nice penmanship in the middle of the night.
Serious. Oh, no, this is, this was rewritten today because I couldn't read my chicken scratch. So since we're having this great discussion, I'm just going to ask one last thing that occurred to me. Are the art and music rooms both all full at the same time?
Not always.
Not always, but sometimes. All right, so my bright idea would work then.
Well, I just wanted to add, and for going down that road real quick, I will say that when we did our walkthrough, there is that room behind the stage that is currently not being used, that is soundproofed and originally was going to be the music room.
So, talked about that.
So I'm sure that's going to come up during their presentation.
And Megan did, during COVID, try that space out. And she said it sounded a lot different when there was a full gym class in there than when I was in there talking to myself on the microphone to see if I could hear from the soundproof side versus where the speakers are in the gym. So, again, it's intended to be soundproof, but how sound, I don't know. Again, I'm not saying that we can't do either one.
Could a special be there instead of a classroom? So you could use, like, could you put art there, put art in the music, interior music room? But whatever, right there. I'm sure those are going to come, that's going to come up when we have that.
Find out is, to the question Jill asked a couple of weeks ago, if the sixth grade stays here, what are some potential things that might happen? We'll have a list of things that could happen. And again, it's just potential scenarios. And some years, we might say, these two things are happening because this is how it works. And then the next year, nothing's happening. And then the next year, these three or four things are happening, right? It might not always be the same unless we find, oh, this way is actually really effective and efficient, and we land on it. But it's tough to play that out when you don't have the scenario.
Right. Okay, I think, I think it's time to move on. But I guess everyone's nodding at me, so we're moving on.
So, so just want to mention, the website continues to be a work in progress, progress. But I do want to notify people that a new page was created last week that can be accessed from the district and both school pages dedicated to the dining information. This page now includes links to the breakfast and lunch menus, My School Bucks, and the newly released Free and Reduced Lunch application and the sharing, the sharing of information form that Adam mentioned earlier. The first place that you could find it is the upper right-hand corner of the website next to the Plus Portals link. And then you can also find it directly below the picture galleries on the main page. So that dining page has been added. Also want to share some good, good news that we received two grants last week, totaling approximately $70,000. The Rural School Grant came through. Again, it's the second year in a row we've received it. It's based on a formula, I'm happy to share that. I will share that in my update with you this week. Got it. So I'll put that in my update too on this week. But we received that this week. And then another early literacy grant. This one was a competitive grant aimed at increasing teacher knowledge to implement evidence-based, inclusive, culturally responsive practices in early literacy through professional learning with a focus on the Mass Literacy Guide and culturally responsive teaching and learning. This grant will support our teachers at East Meadow in implementing the New Wonders Literacy Curriculum. This week, last week, I sent out the Granby Public Schools Emergency Operation Plan to Deputy Chief Ian Sierra at UMass. The deputy chief participated in the version that was adopted in 2016. And he's, he's agreed to give it a once-over and provide any feedback. And our plan is to present that at a school committee meeting, likely in October. I don't know which one, as soon as we get... committee meeting likely in October, I don't know which one, as soon as we get the feedback from him, I'll get that on agenda. But it's been a lot of work to get to this point, we'll be updating that annually, but a couple of other things that we now in place, we have evacuation agreements with Beltratown Public Schools and the McDuffie School in writing mutual agreements, so should there be a situation where we had to move off campus, we have those agreements in place. It's been a lot of work, but I appreciate the emergency preparedness team and I expect members of that, on that team to be present when we share that with the school committee. Thanks to you all and the leadership team and a group of wonderful students who participated in Dino Fest. I really appreciate you giving up time on your Saturdays to be there, especially that first shift, Stephanie. I think we learned a little bit about what we needed to have in place and can be better prepared in the future. So thank you to all of you for participating in that. And then just want to throw it out there, Ms. Dejarle threw it out at Open House, we're continuing to work to hire for a few positions similar to what Chris and Ken said earlier. It's a competitive job market out there, substitutes and paraprofessionals, especially our two positions where we always seem to have a vacancy. So please spread the word, if you have people in mind, have them reach out to me and we're happy to answer any questions. But we'll put that out there. That's all that I have.
So quickly, just on that rural schools grant, the formula is based on enrollment, land area and square miles and then student density, which is the land area divided by student enrollment and then you qualify based on those and then it brings you to another tier of the formula. So it's very, it's not complicated, but it's a, it's a complicated way of getting some revenue, but we will certainly welcome any money that we can certainly get. In prep for the October 17th meeting, is that when the select board, October 17th? We'd like to review the maintenance plan that we had presented to you guys probably a couple of months ago, it was that maintenance facilities, kind of a long-range view of both schools, but mainly the high school. So we'd like to just get that on the agenda for October 4th so we can review it and then we'd like to send it to the select board and finance committee prior to that October 17th meeting so they can review it and kind of have an idea of challenges that we're facing, particularly the high school. I know that document hopefully will get to be for campus-wide, but obviously most of the problems right now are at the high school, so that's really what that document is, the information it contains. So we'd like to get it on that agenda for 10-4 so we can review it. If you want to make any changes, any updates, any additions, we can then send to them. Subcommittee meetings, more specifically finance committee meetings, getting one of those on in the near future and just kind of update the subcommittee on kind of where we were when our FY23 budget was approved in April and May to where we are now. And more importantly, kind of for me, Stephen too, is get some suggestions on what information you want in those subcommittee meetings and having them be a little more structured. In the past, it's always been good conversation, but I feel like sometimes we get off on some tangents, so I'd like to be able to at least for part of those subcommittee meetings have a structure. Here's the information that you guys want from me, here's how you'd like it presented. And then we can, we can go from there. So I would like those, but I would like to get those on the calendar because we're getting into the budget season, really, we're not too far away from that. And again, some things have changed from when our budget was approved back in the springtime, so. School lunch applications, I'll just reiterate, so we're sending out letters, I'd like to do it this week, maybe not, probably next week, just informing families that they didn't receive a letter from us saying that they were directly certified. So that is going through the state's portal based on information that the state gathers, they're directly certified through the portal, which qualifies them whether meals are free and reduced or free like this year or not, they're directly certified through the portal. We just sent those letters out to families, we're going to give them a week or so to get those letters. We also sent sharing of information forms out with them to get those forms back. We will then send out another letter telling families, asking families to fill out a free and reduced lunch application. We will have hard copies available, however, our form is electronic now and it will be on the website, we'll provide a link in the email letter that will take families directly to it. But again, we are encouraging families to fill out the free and reduced lunch forms even though everybody is receiving free lunch and breakfast because it could provide them with some additional benefits in doing so. And again, the sharing information form is optional, but also filling that out and completing it would potentially provide some additional benefits as well. Questions? It's very confusing because meals are a race, I'm trying to make sure-
I feel like it's also well timed with the paperwork that East Meadow has resent out for all the student-
Demographic.
Demographics, so like parents are probably like-
So we've talked about possibly including this in there, we just weren't at the point yet to include that information in the demos, but we had that conversation.
Right.
It's just better off.
Yeah.
We keep it separate.
Yeah, and I understand, but I feel like those things are a lot.
Yes, could be overwhelming, yes.
Excuse me.
Yep. Lastly, end of year report for FY22 is due next Friday, hoping to have it completed by Friday, which I can then, I'm going to need your signature on the certification, get it to Chris for him to review and then submit it by Friday at the latest.
Question? Do we dare ask?
No, don't.
Move along.
Smile and nod.
We meet tomorrow. Okay, great. All right. Anything before we go into executive session?
It's not our agenda, but since you brought it up, the FinCom meeting is in person at select board location or-
That's the way I understood it, five, 5:30 there. That's how I-
It doesn't say where, it just says-
It doesn't say where, but-
It says a time, it says a date.
I, I was interpreting it as-
There's no Zoom link. FinCom hasn't been meeting in person yet, I thought.
I'm sorry, I responded back to Kathy that proposed date and time worked for the school committee. We will be, we will plan to be at the COA at 5:30 on October 17th and she said, great, thank you for hearing that.
Okay.
So-
I was assuming, but then I was like, wait, FinCom, I didn't think was meeting in person, so that's what kind of drew me for a little tail turn. And maybe they are, I haven't tuned in. Shame on me.
I don't think FinCom has met.
I haven't seen any.
I heard from Jen Mallett's husband that her first meeting will be that joint meeting.
What do we start with?
Right. If there's nothing else, we'll-
Do we just want to talk about what's going on for next meeting?
Next meeting?
I just want to make sure that we add the vote for the cross-country donation that we were not able to do today.
Yep, I put that on. I have the cross-country-
Are we doing subcommittees too? Do we need to figure out who for which?
Oh yeah, next meeting, well, no, next meeting is the first meeting of the month that we usually do, we got-
We reversed it this month.
Because of the retreat.
True, sorry.
So we can keep it reversed, but I feel like we have a lot of stuff, so I think we should-
Do we need dip for Adam or his?
It would be good if we could have a subcommittee meeting, even if it's not a-
Yeah, the other, the other point, I meant to say this is if we can try to keep those, the finance subcommittee meeting separate from the other subcommittee so that at least the people that aren't on the subcommittee can sit in and listen. So maybe not run two subcommittees simultaneously, maybe just have the subcommittee for a half hour and then break out to another one, just so, we have heard that in the past that unfortunately someone's got to go to another subcommittee, but they love to be on the finances committee or at least here. So I would suggest if we can do that, so everyone could not participate, but be there.
Well, what about if we devote a half hour of our next meeting to that? We can have it be a finance subcommittee. I know it's me, I don't remember who else is on, so we can, we can have the questions, but the other members can sit and listen in on discussion and so at least we can have that and we'll all at least have information before we sit in on the joint committee meeting. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yeah.
Do 30 minutes? So I don't know if we have to post it any different or not because it's not, it's going to be a subcommittee meeting, but-
I think she would post it, like she would the typical subcommittee, subcommittee meeting, so we'll probably open the meeting.
I would say we would open the meeting, do our consent agenda and then break out into this and then come back, come back full committee to do that. Are you guys okay with that? At least you can listen in and-
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Anything else for next meeting, October 4th, I think?
Just to review that maintenance and facilities plan, I can, I'll provide to you guys before.
So that'll be like for a separate line item, it won't be part of the budget?
Yeah, it wouldn't be part. Now maybe going forward, we can include it in the subcommittee, but for this, I just want to make sure we're all reviewing it before we-
Yeah, I want that, that list to be full committee, so everyone can, can participate.
But we can't, and it's a subcommittee, then we can't participate, you can-
You can listen and I think you can ask, I think you can ask questions, but just we can't vote. You, there's no, you know, because we'd have quorum, there's no, nothing that would be open for a vote. Because when we go to the-
So technically, the person's not on the committee would actually be able to make a public comment, right?
Right.
We can't interact with the subcommittee. So you'd, you'd technically be attending the subcommittee as a-
Not a member.
Towns person, right? So you could have public comment, we just can't go back and forth. Ultimately, my goal for that subcommittee is to kind of provide that subcommittee with as much detail as possible budget-wise. Again, we can come up with a format on how and then you guys will report out to the full committee on some high level things.
We could, might be able to skip the report out if we're all sitting in on it, but, but yeah. But for this one, I just think before that 17th, October 17th meeting, it'll be good if everyone's hearing the same information straight from you, rather than doing that and then the committee members can, we can have a conversation and, and go, but I think 30, do you think 30 minutes will be enough for you to update us on the?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
So the school capacity should stay on.
Oh yeah.
Enrollment dashboard.
Well, because you said there were some things that you were hoping to have back to us for that next meeting.
Yep.
I don't know that we need enrollment dashboard for next, oh no, because it would be the first meeting, right, I'm all confused, right? Yep, yep.
And then we had talked about my goals being not needed, but I want to push them back to the next one, that's fine too, either way.
No, I think we need to get those saddled up. Are we, yeah, but we can't without-
That is a very long meeting.
Yeah, you're right.
You don't think so? I don't think so. I mean, we just, I mean, instead of a school capacity, I mean, it would be a budget committee meeting for 30 minutes and then the school capacity-
Is, well, so if we're, not that I want to take school capacity off, but is there going to be anything you're coming to us with?
That's the plan, is to answer those questions.
So yeah.
Yeah, no, it's going to be long.
Plus the operations, the emergency operations plan?
That may not make it to the fore, I have that as a question mark, but-
But the maintenance plan.
The facilities plan.
And that plan to be, we, you guys have already reviewed it, we've already presented to you, nothing has changed in that.
Okay.
I just want to make sure if there's anything you'd like added to it, but we're just going to kind of re-present it and discuss if that's what we want to send to them for.
And if you're doing your, and that, that's just like a preliminary, right? It's not like the final?
Or the new, for-
No, that would be the final?
He would, you would present goals and on our-
I would take any feedback that you might have and I can adjust them or-
Depending on how it goes, I suppose.
Can we, so we've done this in the past, we can add it to the agenda and we can vote to table it to the next meeting if we feel like we're running too long.
I like that, I, yeah. Are you okay with that?
True.
Okay.
Is it possible to do that in the subcommittee at like 6, 6 to 6:30? I know it's tough for you, but we could also do that too, just hold that sub-finance committee beforehand.
Let me get my other phone. What's?
The fourth, I believe it is.
Yeah. Set an alarm.
Oh, oh, oh shoot, I'm just calling something, stop, stop, stop. I could probably make it work for six.
Just an option, I mean.
If possible, that would probably, probably be good because I have a feeling this, that's going to be a-
Okay.
Long.
I'll do my best, if, if it looks like when it gets closer, I'm not going to be able to do it, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as it's before it's posted.
Yep. I have a new boss, so I'm not really sure how things are, are gonna, are gonna be. So far so good though, I just don't know. I haven't been able to leave, work on time yet.
All right, I want for everybody else, obviously, because I know you guys want to try to attend it, but just a suggestion.
Because I remember to show up for six.
Well, we'll send, we'll send out-
A reminder.
Because I've been there, done that, sorry.
Okay. Good?
Yep.
Thank you.
We're going to vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part A 3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee, the committee will not return to open session.
Ms. Bartos?
Aye.
Ms. Carr?
Aye.
Aye.
Want to hear that?
Yes.
Ms. Paul?
Aye.